And a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a meeting's called to order at six o'clock. Go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Bob Brooks.
Here.
Doreen Klaus.
Here.
Dustin Elder.
Here.
Kristi McGeehee.
Here.
Bobby White.
Here.
I make a motion we adjust the agenda to add ordinance or bill number nine fifty-five as number seven on the old business.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion to add, adjust the agenda to add bill number nine fifty-five to the agenda as number seven on the agenda for old business. And I have a second from Bobby. All those in favor? Four to zero.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, Doreen's made a motion to approve the agenda as presented, and Kristi has seconded. All those in favor? Four to zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've had a motion from Doreen to approve the minutes from April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and Bob has seconded that. All those in favor? Four to zero. Okay, we'll go into guest speakers. Jason Gibson. If you just make sure the light's on up there when you... There you go.
Basically, I'm just here to ask for a city license for my business. I'm trying to start a, or I have started a pressure washing business and I can be building into doing soft washing and grow into doing the painting for parking lots and hopefully end up getting growing into trash removal also or trunk removal for people along with within my business. And I'm asking for the city license to do that. I've already got everything in order, including insurance and stuff, and got licensed with Neosho to be working with them.
So you've, so you've already got something with Neosho?
Yes.
And so you've just got a rig and you go wash people's homes and driveways?
I'm starting off right now. I'm starting off with a small pressure washer. I've got a line to get a buffer tank that I'm going to get built up to go along with it and then be building my setup out of my pickup truck and it grow into a, hopefully a trailer setup that's a bigger setup to handle bigger jobs as I go along. I'm starting off small at the moment and growing myself as I go.
That's, that's a great way to go. Do you have a price list or anything? Do you have a...
At the moment, I don't have a set price list. It's going to be basically set up depending on the job. I'm going to be starting most of my jobs at a base of a hundred dollars and depending on their, on the severity of the dirtiness on it and the size of the job, what I'm needing to do.
So it'll be bid jobs. You'll go outbid it and then they can accept your bid or not? Okay.
Yes. I plan on starting out, going a little bit door to door, try to market myself out of bid right now and grow my marketing to where I'm marketing a little better than just knocking on people's doors or maybe I can get some flyers going and commercials or something along that way. I have built a Facebook page already with it. I have a domain established and going to be going in and getting my website built up on that.
What's the Facebook page?
The Facebook page would is under, is the Grumpy Grunge Removal LLC.
Okay.
Well, I like the name.
I do too.
I figured it gives me a broad aspect on cleaning up for businesses and people.
Yeah. You won't be doing, this will just be off-site? It won't be at your address?
No, no, I'm just basically running my office out of my address until I can get enough to get a brick and mortar site. And it's not going to be at the site that I'm working on. It's going to be out and about at people's places or businesses.
Okay. Anyone else?
Anybody else got questions?
I'm good to go with. I would like to make the approval that we allow him to have a business license in Granby.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion to allow that Grumpy Grunge Removal Service to do business in Granby by Doreen, and Kristi seconded. All those in favor? Four to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you should be able to pick up your license... Tomorrow.
Okay, I got a drop down in Neosho at nine o'clock, but I should be able to be back before you guys are closing.
Yeah, we're open till five tomorrow, so nine, eight to five.
Yeah, I should be open by the end of the morning.
I'll let, I'll let Sandra know so she can get it ready for you.
Welcome to Granby.
Okay, and bills to pay.
Trevor, it looks like you boys have been busy.
Yes.
That's good.
You're jumping to business, you're jumping to department head reports.
Are they in order?
It's my fault. I put the bills to pay balances on hand at the, after the department report, so I apologize.
Okay, I was like, oh, just going through what's the next.
You should say, you should say, it should be City of Granby transaction list by vendor?
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I deal, I shouldn't, maybe you should point out that the big bill at For Liberty that's on page two, we're going to hold that and do some additional investigation on that because there's just some numbers that don't make sense to me. That's a lot of money, so I want to make sure we're square on that.
Which one was that?
It's fifteen thousand dollars.
It's on page two of the transaction list by vendor.
Thank you.
The, the claim is that one of the meters out at the wastewater plant wasn't reading for X amount of time, so they're saying that we haven't paid that bill for a long time.
I still feel like we need to contact Liberty and ask them to assess all of our bills for the year and let them know that we're trying to close out for June thirty, so we can make sure we've got everything paid and we're not going to come up later and say, oh, here's another bill, just for those kind of reasons.
And I, and I asked about that. You said we had a portfolio manager, what, Ronald or something like that? Jordan?
Yeah.
We got somebody.
Okay.
He is, he is our account representative.
She, she, yeah.
But the meter itself is not transmitting to Liberty. The money can't be regulated, so that's something that, I don't know how that could have been taught.
Well, did we receive a bill? I mean, because they'll still send a bill regardless. So when we're not, if we know how many bills we should be receiving, if we don't receive one, we need to reach out and make that contact.
Okay, there's one bill for, that's all of the sewer related. It's the main plant, it's lift stations, grinder, there's a bunch, a bunch. And on some of those, the main sewer plant is not there. So if you just look at it, it, you know, unless I knew to go through and check to make sure there's this many, I wouldn't have known that. So, and there was one or two that are, it's there, but it's an ordinarily slow number. So Jordan, I have spoken to her about that and, and we talked a little bit, but I, I want to sit down with Lana and look at these and because some of the dates are, are crossing over. So I want to make sure that we're not, you know, missing something here.
And this will be a good training for the next clerk.
So on the, on the summary report, and I know you've, I know that I've asked this before, maybe, what does, what does aging mean? When you're talking about aging billing charges?
On the utility, older than thirty days.
So those are...
So one to thirty days would be the current.
So overdue, they're just overdue bills? Okay.
Is it normal, the figures we have here? Are these, they seem...
Is that normal?
What are you looking at? The ones were over.
Certainly we had several that were on there that, due to the error in March, there were some that were...
I don't have that.
So it was a little bit higher than normal.
Maybe, maybe I do.
We don't really have, we didn't make extra efforts to reach out to them.
This is what they're saying. Thank you. What city streets did we get filled in cracks?
And this is money to be paid.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you. A lot of gas charges. I don't know. How's our storage room coming along? Is it done?
Yes. We need some light switches, but the other than that, that is ready to come.
Good.
The storage room.
Okay.
And it is done.
On the, excuse me, Lana? On the summary report for Granby, we have a water meter fee, but I'm not seeing the gas meter fee.
I rearranged all the fire report, so I may be able to find out. I'm, I'm answering without looking at the report, but I believe that is because on the gas, the seventeen fifty is included in the initial charge. It's not billed separately as a meter charge, whereas the water meter is billed separately as a meter charge.
Oh, well, I have seen that on the bill.
You've seen the seventeen fifty separately or...
No, I've seen the water fee separately, but not the gas.
So the seventeen fifty is included in the initial rate for gas, whereas the water meter is on, is separate.
Perfect.
When you... This work? Are we closer to getting a pharmacy in there?
So I think that I did their part.
They, they, they needed to clean it out so they could come in and put that there.
Right, sounds good. Did we clean that out or thing?
Yeah, we did.
Thank you.
So, did you talk to that guy, the contractor? Kinda, I know, I talked to him on the phone a couple of times. But, so, he was installing the moisture barrier today. Do you know what the next step is? Do you, what, did he say?
It looked like they had a few more cones to put in and a few more pillars and a few posts, but not, not very much. It seemed like they wanted way more up the outside.
Yeah, because, yeah, because as soon as that's done, they can put that pharmacy unit in there.
Right. The way you talked about that, a few more of those to get in there.
I'm just kind of curious. How do we come up with a negative hundred and ten dollars and ninety-five cents in donations?
On what?
Donations, donation income?
So if you received the donations last fiscal year and then they were spent this year, that shows a negative there.
Okay, thank you.
And I actually will be specific to that. That was a donation that was made to the dog hound, and then she spent the minus fifty on it.
Okay. Everybody good? I move that we approve the bills to pay and balances on hand.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Bobby to approve the bills to pay and balances on hand and seconded by Kristi. All those in favor? Four to zero. It was almost five to zero, almost four to zero. I'm getting better. That's the first one. Okay, moving on to department head reports. Department head reports, Doreen.
Victor, how's everything going with the new, uh, treatment plant? Let's hear it.
We're burning bugs out.
There's a new alarm on the pump station?
We do have a temporary alarm.
Well, I just was reading through and I noticed that a lot of them were tripping and all that stuff, so...
Hey, that is a question I did have. And one of the things they did was reset the...
Voltage.
Term limiters or whatever, the voltage, the on, on it so it wouldn't, because they read the, the voltage, the voltage, the incoming voltage on all the pumps. And they set it above what their normal rate was, yeah.
They had it set at one hundred and sixty volts. We actually had five hundred volts.
So they bumped it up. And has it, has it kicked?
No.
So it hasn't, it hasn't kicked since then, so that's a good thing.
But it's performing like it's supposed to?
Yes.
Okay.
When it's on.
And the rain hasn't affected it? Do you want me to quit asking you?
But the pumps have kept up. And it didn't trip out, but, yeah, it's kept up. It's pumped into the new big storm retention basin. Moved water out of it, backed into the plant for retrieval, so all those components work.
I'm so money well spent. I want everyone to know that Jim and his guys worked their tail off and got our playground equipment up at the ballpark. Everything looks great. The mulch is all down. It looks fantastic, and the kids are loving it. They were loving it before everything got completed, but now they're safely loving it.
We got, we got one other piece that we want to put down there, but I want to get the package.
Okay, yeah. And I noticed that when I was down there the other night that all the extras, pieces and parts were gone from that side of the building too, so thank you. I do have an issue. I think we need some more trash cans down there in the next couple of, starting Monday. We drag them down, but they get so full, and we kind of need some down by the T-ball field this year as well. So if you've got a couple extra, we'd appreciate them.
The other night, your pitch is bad, and I wanted to run down.
Well, you only had two bags.
Because they only wanted to push two back.
Probably, that and the other ones were probably already full.
She's only want to take two back and then bring two down.
Something like that.
That's exactly what it is.
I make them boys do it.
Yeah, me too.
Having all those positions full increases the run sheet.
Very thick.
Yeah. I had four cars in front of my house the other day. Four. Two county, two of ours, for a gentleman that was walking down the street. So we're covered. Make a motion to approve the department head reports as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, Doreen's made a motion to approve the department head reports as presented, and Bobby has seconded. All those in favor? Four to zero. Okay. I'm so sorry, Deb.
This one's been posted. It'll be easy.
Yeah. So ordinance nine fifty-one.
Bill nine, sorry, bill nine fifty-one and ordinance amending title five, building and construction of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, to add a new chapter five oh five, building permits and contractor licenses for the City of Granby, Missouri.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty-one on the first reading by number and title only after being posted publicly for ten days.
I'll second.
Doreen's made a motion to approve bill number nine fifty-one by number and title only after being posted for ten days, and Bobby seconded that motion. All those in favor?
A roll call.
Four to zero.
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. Bob Brooks.
Here.
Doreen Klaus.
Yes.
Kristi McGeehee.
Yes.
Bobby White.
Yes.
Okay. Bill number nine five two and ordinance amending title one, Government Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, to add a new article nine, Building Inspector of Chapter one fifteen, City Officials for the City of Granby, Missouri.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty-two on the first reading by number and title only after being posted publicly for ten days.
Second.
Okay, Bobby's made a motion to approve bill number nine fifty-two by number and title only after being posted for ten days, and Doreen has seconded that motion. Roll call, please.
Bob Brooks.
Yes.
Doreen Klaus.
Yes.
Kristi McGeehee.
Yes.
Bobby White.
Yes.
Bill nine five three and ordinance amending title five, Building and Construction of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, to add a new chapter five one five, Fences for the City of Granby, Missouri. Whereas the City of Granby does not currently have in place any ordinance, regulation, or requirements with respect to construction or maintenance of fences within the city and, whereas the Board of Aldermen believe it is in the best interest, health, and safety of residents of the city, that the construction and maintenance of fences with the city be regulated. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Granby, Missouri as follows. Section one, that title five, Building and Construction of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, is hereby amended to add, enact a new chapter five one five, Fences, which shall provide as follows. Chapter five one five, Fences, section five one five point oh one oh, Building Permit Required. No person shall construct or erect a privacy decorative or security fence upon any lot in the city without first having obtained a permit from the city clerk. The city clerk shall make a permit application available to any person, and the completed application shall set forth the location, construction, and material of the fence. The clerk, building inspector, may grant the permit if he/she finds a fence to be in compliance with this chapter and of the codes of the city, or deny the permit if he/she does not. Any person aggrieved by a decision of the building inspector may appeal to the Board of Aldermen. The fee for a permit application shall be set by the Board of Aldermen from time to time. Section five one five point oh two oh, Utility Marking and Easements. A, the homeowner or contractor shall call eight one one and have all buried utilities on or adjacent to the property in the area of construction of the fence marked prior to the commencement of construction. B, no fence shall be constructed over dedicated utility easements. In the case of existing fences, prior to enactment of this code, constructed over such easements, the city shall not be responsible for the replacement of said fence due to its removal. Section five one five point oh three oh, Permitted Fences Construction Standards. A, it shall be unlawful for any person to erect or maintain any fence or other like structure except as follows. One, any fence or wall constructed or altered shall not exceed six feet in height unless approved by the Board of Aldermen. Any fence higher than six feet may be approved for security or screening purposes or other such purpose that the Board determines to be accepted, acceptable. Two, in no case shall a fence be erected so as to enclose a block or, or block a stormwater catch basin, culvert, or other stormwater's construction, structure in any development. Three, materials for the construction of a fence may be wood, PVC, woven wire, chain link, wrought iron, square tubing, or metal pipe. Use of any other may be approved by the Board of Aldermen. All framework of a wood fence must be on the inside portion of the fence, and all posts of a wire fence must be inside of the fabric. Ornamental dividers, plastic chains, posts, or other materials erected along driveways or sidewalks shall not be considered a fence. If you have a question on if your fence is covered by these regulations, please contact City Hall and verify. In no case shall the front yard of any residential property be enclosed by a privacy fence, making the front yard not visible to the street. Section five one five point oh four oh, Maintenance. A, the owners of any property shall be responsible for maintaining said fences, fences in good condition and to remove any fence which becomes unsightly, dilapidated, or dangerous to public safety, health, or welfare. B, it shall be unlawful for any person to paste, stick, or put upon any fence or wall within the city any indecent, obscene, immoral, or grossly written words or materials. Section five one five point oh five oh, Fences Around Pools. Any in-ground swimming pool, hot tub, or spa containing water more than twenty-four inches in depth shall be completely surrounded by a fence or barrier at least forty-eight inches in height. Above-ground pools do not have a fence requirement, but such pool with a depth of more than twenty-four inches must have a barrier or deck around it with a locked gate. If no barrier is installed, above-ground pools shall have the ladder removed when not in use. Section five one five point oh six oh, Violations Declared Nuisance. All fences or other like structures erected or maintained in violation of this chapter are hereby deemed and declared to be a nuisance, and any owner or occupant of a lot or tract of land upon which such nuisance exists shall be deemed guilty of an ordinance violation each day on which such violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. Section two, this ordinance shall be effective on passage by the City of Granby Board of Aldermen.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty-three on the first reading. Suspend the rules and place bill number nine fifty-three on the second and final reading by title and number only.
Second.
Do I have to say all that?
No.
No.
Okay, I've had a motion from Christie to approve bill... nine fifty-three, uh, on the first reading and suspending the rules. And I've had a second from Doreen. All those in favor, or, sorry, roll call, please.
Bob Brooks?
Yes.
Dorian Klaus?
Yes.
Christie McGeehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
Bill number nine five three and three and an ordinance amending title five, Building and Construction of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Granby, Missouri, to add a new chapter five one five, fences for the City of Granby, Missouri.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty-three on the second and final reading by number and title only.
I'll second.
Dorian's made a motion to approve bill number nine five-three on the second reading by number and title only. Bobby seconded that motion, roll call.
Bob Brooks?
Yes.
Dorian Klaus?
Yes.
Christie McGeehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
Let me get another drink of water.
This is just a one thing.
Yeah, wait till you get to the next.
Lana do the next one.
Welcome.
I'll go.
You guys might, you guys might have to tap in and out on this deal.
Bill number nine five-four and ordinance amending title one, Government Code, Chapter one forty, Granby Memorial Cemetery of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, to add a new section one four oh point one one oh, fees, establishing maintenance fees and marking fees for the cemetery. Whereas the City of Granby, Missouri owns and maintains the Granby Memorial Cemetery, the care, maintenance, management, and beautification of which is delegated to the Cemetery Committee pursuant to section one four oh point oh nine oh of the City of Granby Code of Ordinances. And whereas due to the increasing cost of maintaining the cemetery and in setting grave markers, the Board of Aldermen with the advice and consent of the Cemetery Committee, believe it is necessary and prudent to establish fees for such maintenance and grave marking. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Granby, Missouri as follows. Section one, that title one, Government Code, Chapter one four oh, Granby Memorial Cemetery of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, is hereby amended to add a new section one four oh point one nine oh, fees, which shall provide as follows. Section one four oh point one nine oh fees, A, maintenance fees, there shall be assessed a one-time fee of three hundred dollars for perpetual maintenance of the Granby Memorial Cemetery upon the sale of any cemetery grave site as provided in section one four oh point two oh oh, A, point A of the City of Granby Code of Ordinances. If such fee was not assessed at the time the grave site was purchased, then prior to the marking of any grave, there shall be assessed a one-time fee of three hundred dollars for perpetual maintenance of the Granby Memorial Cemetery in conjunction with any marking fee assessed pursuant to this section. B, marking fees, there shall be assessed a fee of one hundred dollars for the marking of any grave site. Section two, this ordinance shall be effective on passage by the City of Granby Board of Aldermen.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty-four on the first reading. Suspend the rules and place bill number nine fifty-four on the second and final reading by title and number only.
I'll second that.
Okay, Christie's made a motion to accept bill number nine fifty-four on the first reading and, uh, suspend the rules for the second reading and Bobby has seconded that. Can I get a roll call?
Bob Brooks?
Yes.
Dorian Klaus?
Yes.
Christie McGeehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
Bill number nine five-four and ordinance amending, amending title one, Government Code, Chapter one four oh, Granby Memorial Cemetery of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, to add a new section one four oh point one one oh, fees, establishing maintenance fees and marking fees for the cemetery.
I move to accept bill number nine five-four on the second and final reading by number and title only.
Second.
Bobby's made a motion to accept bill number nine fifty-four on the second reading by number and title only and Christie has seconded that motion. Roll call, please.
Bob Brooks?
Yes.
Dorian Klaus?
Yes.
Christie McGeehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, went too quick.
She's making this one. I volunteered to read it.
I'll take the first page if you want me to.
I'll read it and we're trying to decide if bill number nine fifty-two, did we go from nine fifty-one to nine fifty-three?
No. We've done them all.
Ninety-two was regarding the building inspector?
Yes.
Yes.
We did them all. Yep.
Bill number nine fifty-five and ordinance amending title five, Building and Construction of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, to add a new chapter five ten, building codes for the City of Granby, Missouri. Whereas the City of Granby does not currently have in place any building, mechanical, plumbing, or electrical codes regulating the construction of buildings within the city. And whereas the Board of Aldermen believe it is in the best interest, health, safety, and welfare of residents of the city that building codes be enacted to regulate and provide safe, quality construction within the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Granby, Missouri as follows. Section one, that title five, Building and Construction of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby, Missouri, is hereby amended to add, enact, a new chapter five ten, building codes which shall provide as follows. Chapter five ten, building codes, section five one oh point oh one oh, adoption of international building codes. A, a certain document, one copy of which is on file in the office of the city clerk in the City of Granby, Missouri, being marked and designated as the International Building Code two thousand eighteen edition, including appendix, chapters C, F, G, I, and J, as supplemented and amended as published by the International Code Council by and is hereby adopted as the building code of the City of Granby, Missouri, for regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use. And the condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use and the demolition of such structures as herein provided and each and all of the regulations, provisions, penalties, conditions, and terms of said building code on file in the office of the City of Granby are hereby referred to, adopted, and made part hereof as if fully set out in this section with the amendments, additions, insertions, deletions, and changes, if any, prescribed in subsection B of this section. B, the following amendments to the International Building Code two thousand eighteen edition shall apply within the City of Granby, Missouri. One, lot size. A, a building or addition must meet an eight-foot setback boundary from an adjacent property and twenty-five feet from all roads and alleys. Utilities or utility easements may require more if the proposed building is otherwise compliant with all codes. B, any concrete pores, patio, cords, or slabs that extend beyond ten feet from the wall of the structure must meet the eight-foot setback boundary from the property line. Two, footing. A, for dwellings, footings must be at least twenty-four inches wide, fifteen inches in depth, and contain two and one-half inch continuous rebar. B, for any structure with plumbing, concrete for the footing must meet or exceed three thousand PSI at twenty-eight days. The bottom of the footing must be at least eighteen inches below finished grade. C, footing for block or stem wall with crawl space must be minimum eight inches and twenty-four inches wide for a block or concrete stem wall or a twelve-inch-thick footing for a twelve-inch-thick wall. D, depth, foundations shall be built upon natural solid ground where possible. Loam or other soil containing organic materials shall not be used. Where solid natural ground does not occur at foundation depth, such foundations shall be extended down to natural solid ground or piles shall be used. Three, floor. A, concrete for dwellings, a slab must be at least ten inches above footing and seven inches higher than finished grade that slopes away from the building. The concrete slab must be at least four inches thick. Concrete for the slab must exceed, must meet or exceed three thousand PSI at twenty-eight days. Minimum of six mil vapor barrier is required for all interior slabs. B, block or stem wall with crawl space, there must be at least twenty-four inches between the crawl space floor and the bottom of the floor joist. The ground must include a protective moisture barrier of at least six mil for a conditioned crawl space and on the bottom of the joist for event a crawl space. C, all slabs must have a rebar, pins, or uprights installed at a minimum of four feet apart. D, monolithic pores must meet or exceed thirty-five hundred PSI and be a minimum of four inches thick. Four, framing of floors. A, refer to the International Building Code span chart. Five, walls. A, single-story, the minimum on all walls, ten feet and below, must be twenty-four inches on twen- on center with four-sheet OSB corners on standard framing applications with a double-top plate application. B, two-story, exterior walls on any two-story building must be a minimum of a standard two-by-four on sixteen-inch center with a minimum of seven sixteenths inch OSB sheeting. Six, roof. A, the roof must meet the minimum of thirty pounds per square foot whether utilizing framing or trusses. I, example, rafters or trusses, twenty-four inches on center with seven sixteenths OSB with clips. Clips are required on all spans more than sixteen inches on center. Set two. Example, rafter or trusses on four-foot centers with purlins on two-foot centers for metal roofs. Seven, structure height. A, maximum height for residential buildings is two and one-half stories. Eight, fire prevention. A, duplexes, triplexes, or fourplexes must have a two-hour firewall between units. C, this building code shall not be construed to relieve from responsibility or to lessen the responsibility of any person, firm, or corporation owning, controlling, or constructing buildings, nor shall the city be held as assuming any liability of any nature by reasons of the inspection authority hereby issued to the city building inspector for inspection of buildings. D, it shall be the duty of any owner or subdivider of property to extend to such property or subdivision and each lot within said subdivision as directed by the building inspector of the City of Granby, utilities at the property owner's or developer's cost and expense in compliance with the Code of Ordinances of the City of Granby. Section five one oh point oh two oh, electrical code. A certain document, one copy of which is on file in the office of the building inspector of the City of Granby, Missouri, being marked and designated as the National Elec- Electrical Code two thousand seventeen and as published by the National Fire Protection Association. B and is hereby adopted as the electric code of the City of Granby in the state of Missouri for the regulation and control of electrical wiring, electrical devices, or electric material as herein provided. And each and all of the regulations, provisions, penalties, conditions, and terms of said National Electrical Code are hereby referred to, adopted, and made part hereof as if fully set out herein without amendment. Section five one oh point oh three oh, plumbing code. A certain document, one copy of which is on file in the office of the building inspector of the City of Granby, being marked and designated as the International Plumbing Code two thousand eighteen edition as published by the International Code Council, Inc. B and is hereby adopted as the plumbing code of the City of Granby in the state of Missouri, regulating the design, construction, quality of materials, erection, installation, alteration, repair, location, relocation, replacement, addition to, use, or maintenance of plumbing systems in the City of Granby. And each and all of the regulations, provisions, penalties, conditions, and terms of said plumbing code are hereby referred to, adopted, and made a part hereof as if fully set out in this section with no amendments. Section five one oh point oh four oh, mechanical code. A certain document, one copy of which is on file in the office of the building inspector of the City of Granby, being marked and designated as the International Mechanical Code two thousand eighteen edition as published by the International Code Council, Inc. B and here- is hereby adopted as the mechanical code of the City of Granby in the state of Missouri, regulating the design, construction, quality of materials, erection, installation, alteration, repair, location, relocation, replacement, addition to, use, or maintenance of, mechanical systems in the City of Granby. And each and all of the regulations, provisions, penalties, conditions, and terms of said mechanical code on file in the office of the building inspector of the City of Granby are hereby referred to, adopted, and made a part hereof as if fully set out in this section with no amendments. Section five one oh point oh five oh, violations and penalty. Any person who shall violate a provision of any code adopted in this chapter or shall fail to comply with any of the requirements thereof, or who shall erect, construct, alter, or repair a building or structure in violation of an approved plan or directive of the building inspector, or of a permit or certificate issued under the provision of this code, shall be guilty of an ordinance violation punishable by a fine of not more than five hundred dollars. Each day that a violation continues after due notice has been served shall be deemed a separate offense. Section two, this ordinance shall be effective upon passage by the City of Granby Board of Aldermen.
Hey, could you read that again? I missed the middle part. I got lost.
I was dizzy at one point. I thought I was gonna pass out.
I move to accept bill number nine fifty-five on the first reading. Suspend the rules and place bill number nine fifty-five on the second and final reading by title and number only.
Second.
Okay, Dorian's made a motion to approve bill number nine fifty-five on the first reading and suspend the rules for the second reading and Bobby has seconded that motion. Roll call, please.
Bob Brooks?
Yes.
Dorian Klaus?
Yes.
Christie McGeehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
On the second reading, I move...
She's gotta read it first.
Oh, excuse me.
You're trying to beat me.
Bill number nine five, and on the second reading, I move to accept bill number nine five five, on the second and final reading by number and title only.
I'll second that.
Okay, Bob has made a motion to approve bill number nine fifty-five on the second reading by number and title only.
I'll second that.
Okay, Bob has made a motion to approve bill number nine fifty-five on the second reading by number and title only and Bobby has seconded that motion. Roll call, please.
Bob Brooks?
Yes.
Dorian Klaus?
Yes.
Christie McGeehee?
Yes.
Bobby White?
Yes.
Thank you for reading those ladies.
Also, thank you to the committee that worked really hard to get all these ordinance put together.
Okay, uh... I don't know that we need a follow-up discussion regarding cemetery mowing. From what I understand from Karen, and I talked to her today, and Lana's been talking to her, is, uh, I was wrong, by the way.
Okay.
And I told Karen. But, uh, they're, they're soliciting bids for, uh, someone to mow the cemetery and they've got a couple of pretty promising ones, as a matter of fact. And then, uh, they're gonna come back to us when they get the final bid that they think is good and, uh, shoot us the number just so we're not breaking them if it's something like that. And then, uh, and then everything else that we agreed upon, but it sounded, it sounded part promising to me. Uh, okay, so moving on to new business, uh, generator maintenance proposal. Okay, so moving on to new business, generator maintenance proposal.
What it is, for several years, we haven't had a maintenance program for our generators. And for now, like, one of the fire stations is down. The one at well number two, we have to manually operate it. And then we've got the two new generators coming in at the sewer plant that we'll need on a maintenance program. And I think this one even included the two that were taken out of the sewer plant in the program, because we're talking about using one here. So, and...
This price would include those?
I believe so, yes.
They would alter the price for the additional two?
I think she had... I think it was six generators.
I see five.
You've got two, two, and then two old ones, so that's four.
Now, our bill would be five, six, but I don't think we were taking the trailer one.
Maybe she'll do a five-one, get one free.
Those years are the Generax, right? Yeah, two Generax.
Make sure we're planning for the, for the new one that's coming, too.
Yeah, because it's not listed under the equipment.
Yeah. Didn't have the lift station, we would have to add it because we didn't have, we don't have it yet.
Yeah, correct.
So, so that would be the sixth one, but...
The one, the new one that'll come in.
Right, for the pump station.
Pump station.
The main station. And are the, are the, so the old ones that are there now that we may move to another location and still use, those are under this?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I believe Victor said that, did you say you had been getting, they had been doing some work on them for you?
Uh, yes, yeah, the same company, Clifford, Clifford Power.
Yeah.
So, so just, just, yeah, so just, just from my experience in, in working with equipment in the military for a lot of years, a maintenance contract for all of our stuff is vital. It'll save us way a lot of money in equipment down the road.
These, you know, they kind of, in a roundabout way, they kind of sit on the back burner. You know, until you need it, and when you need it...
You want to be able to push the button and it fires up.
You need it.
So...
Will this be done, like, on a rotating basis, like, we'll do this one and then two months later we'll do the next one, or...
They'll probably come in and do them all. Do them all at the same time, yeah. But then they'll all be on an exercise program where we'll have them, like, our generators will start, say, at seven-thirty on a Monday. That way, when the guys go check the wells, they'll physically hear it and know that it's working. And same with the one at the fire station, and then Victor's... They'll do that once every week, so. And right now, they're not doing that.
Why not?
Because it's, the one at the well got hit by lightning hard and it hasn't been right since, and...
Fire station was never set up with it.
Joplin Cummings.
Will this group come and take care of all that and get these alarms set?
Yes.
And what are we gonna do about the sixth one that's not on this list?
We'll get it on there.
Yeah, so I mean...
We'll just amend this after?
Well, I, I don't know.
Are we looking at additional charges here for air filters? The belts?
Any, any parts, yeah.
That's on us, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I would encourage the board to... So we can revisit the contract because it indicates in there that it is to automatically renew and...
And it goes into possibly the next board as well, so, yeah, so... In theory, I like it, and I don't, I don't know about the rest of the board, but one, we would have to get the sixth generator on there and find out what the price is. And two, we gotta look at the length of the contract, because we just found out some information on another contract that was done previously that there's, there's limits to what we can, how long we can make these contracts for. So, good idea, but we're gonna have to wait until you get the, more information on it. So, if you can get the six, ask them what it would be for the sixth generator.
No. Okay, yeah, so we don't know what it's gonna be, but I'll try to get the...
I can't imagine that it would... Well, I guess, I guess there are different prices for different generators on there.
Right, but, yeah.
Can we postpone this?
But if we postpone it, then we're postponing maintenance on the other five generators, right? And we don't have any idea when the sixth generator's coming in.
Yeah, I was told June, towards the end of June. We still have the one down there working now.
So...
I should be able to find out. I'll, I'll get ahold of them tomorrow and surely...
If we can find out before the next meeting...
Yeah.
What the, what the nomenclature is on the next, on the new generator, then we can add it to the contract and hit it again.
How frequently are these air filters needing changed, or how frequently do we change the belts?
Not very often.
Yeah, I've probably had some that made it twenty years before the belt had to be replaced, but...
Yeah, I think some of the, one of the ones we were looking at from the sewer plant out there had the original belts on it.
Now, it says, it says in that contract, changing belts, changing air filters...
But that's optional, we either have to send it or find...
Right, do they do that automatically every year, or only if it's...
Needed, yeah. They'll check them and if it's, the belts are cracked...
So, so we might not have any extra parts fees, except...
Right.
I'm sure the air filter's only changed.
But you hope that there's just exercise hours, it's always, all that's ever on. I mean, we don't have any outages.
We're still doing a little more discussion over here, sorry.
They asked me about the batteries and... Because like I said, that's something that gets forgotten. You know, and you don't realize how old that battery is.
But they, they check all of this every time they come in, so, I mean, it's not, it's not just those five things.
Was this in our package? Because I don't remember seeing it. Was it brought to us when we got here?
And they've got, this company's got a deal, a group out of Kansas City, Tulsa, I believe Fort Smith, Fort Smith or Fayetteville. So, they're all pretty, you know, close to us.
So, I would entertain a motion to push this to the next meeting, once we get more information.
The next meeting?
You guys think you can get the information before the next meeting?
This says it's only good till May eleventh. We, wasn't there something else, Lana, didn't you say something about the length of it, too? We need to check on that?
Well, that's just a call to the lawyer.
So, you're comfortable postponing it for the next meeting?
I'm sorry?
So, we're comfortable postponing till the next meeting?
I am.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we postpone the discussion on the general, generator maintenance proposal to the May twenty-second meeting.
I'll second that.
Doreen's made a motion to postpone the discussion on the generator maintenance proposal until the next meeting. And Bobby has seconded it. All those in favor? Four-oh. Okay, moving on to amendment to the agreement between the City of Granby and Bayhorn Enterprises LLC.
Sue Bayhorn had requested, requested additional administrative fees. These would be paid for out of grant money, we're no longer spending the money. So, it would not cost the city additional money, but because this project has gone on for so long, she's had to put in quite a bit of investment on it.
Was this the lady that presented? And this is out of grant funds, not out of...
Exactly.
It has drunk on. Lana, what is the administration fee now? Do you have any idea off the top of your head?
I'm looking at the figures, I do not recall off the top of my head. I, I think it was five thousand. But she does state in here that it's normally a T and G grant period of two years and this one is far...
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, since it's, the time of the, the time of the project has been extended, that she would get a little extra money for doing the stuff that she's done during the extension.
And she's done a great job, she's very helpful.
And this, the thirty-five hundred, that doesn't take away from anything that we have planned to buy with that grant money?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, we don't really know the exact number of what was left anyway.
Around one hundred and fifty thousand in grant money could have been submitted for...
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the amendment to the agreement between the City of Granby and Bayhorn Enterprises to the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, Bobby's made a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement between the City of Granby and Bayhorn Enterprises to include a thirty-five hundred dollar administration fee. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Christie's second in the motion. All those in favor? Four to zero. Two, okay. Okay. And...
Make a motion.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for the closed session.
I make a motion, we go into closed session in accordance with RSMO six-one-zero, zero-two-one, legal matter.
Okay. Doreen's made a motion to go into closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bobby seconded. We'll go into closed session at... Oh, sorry, roll call.
Bob Brooks?
Yes.
Yes. Christian McGeehee.
Yes.
Bobby White.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to closed session at seven-oh-three.
What did you need for me, Lana?
Here. Okay, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Because I was looking at other trucks, but most of them I seen at half a million, seven hundred thousand, whatever. Still just maybe, I'll spend some money on it. Well, yeah, I was looking at a pretty good trailer, moved around, Paul, Art Brooks, Bill Hall. The guy had a lot of them, and then went back to them. Yeah, I just did not be like, yeah, it can't be, it's not by state patrol.
I guess, I guess he's been in the back end of the Chevy, with a tractor, a trailer, a wagon, all quarter.
Well, it's cool, it's fine. It will probably stop. I had a little bit extra meat behind it. I'll take one of those, my, my, I'll just let you bring it. Oh, yeah, well, I love that, yeah. That are marbles on that, they never get to break, really. They're very regular to stop. I don't know, I don't know, never looked at that one, man. I, I, yeah. Yeah, I was starting to look at some, too. You're sixty-seven. Yeah. Two thousand sixteen? Yeah. Okay. Mine's sixty-seven, what is it, uh? Mine's sixteen, what was the dog? Can you roll the table? Mine will be right down there. Yeah, check it out. Let y'all have a lovely evening. All right. Here, go ahead, I'll show. Uh, some folks from out of state want this, want that, want this, leave this, leave that, feeling like, okay, I'm gonna have to go, I'm leaving that, you know, and we better go, we gotta have a fresh batch and. I'll put this last bunch of the pack. No, they were from, yeah, out of state somewhere. Yep, and all of them. And that was. The next day, we got all this shit, we go there and follow all of that. Oh, excuse me. He's a handyman. He is, he's quite proper. I just had the other P D. Yeah, I need to ask some questions, cause we got that sink and everything in there. But we get water, we can get water through that wall right there, it would go against the wall, the bathroom's on this side, but to get that thing to drain, that's all concrete floor. That's a chip concrete floor that way in the drain. What's six uh? Uh, for the. The cat. Like, that's uh. Um, is that outside wall? Well, it, we have to put it in, I mean, what, what, what I wanted to do is like, here's the, here's how the room's sitting. Um, and that bathroom, like this, the bathroom is sitting here, that, that has the exercise room, the big room there, I was gonna put that, yeah, right against that, that wall. So that I, I, I know I'd get water through that wall, because there's a, there's a sink and a shower right, a shower right at the corner, so I know I'd get through there, get the water, tap in the water somehow. But that shower drain is right there, but I don't know how I can get to that drain. Well. That shower might be built up. But if there wasn't a negative torque rate in there, the shower wouldn't have been able to go through there. Okay. Paper running to? Teacher, right, teacher very hard, right? Right, okay. Tying into, but it's all exterior wall. Yeah. It's pretty visible out the wall and. Right, yeah, right there, but it's not, it's. I don't know, I mean, if, if we could do it against that wall, it'd be fine with me, but I was gonna go against the wall between the shower and, or between the walls between the bathroom there and that room, that I know I can get water right there. But like I said, I don't know how to get water, if I go against the outside wall, if you go against the outside wall, it's gonna go out, and you're, you're, that's just what I'm running right up there, a little, where they tell it all, the door, kind of. But. We might get water over there. Where your country is in the bathroom. Or the front bathroom. Oh, yeah, yeah, with the front bathroom and the back bathroom, you know, that's it, you know, just one hundred, so. See the door, if that water flow over here, should go to water. Yeah, so you drop it out of there? Would be wrong, probably. The screen out there, out front, it's a rough problem. So, I'm just wondering what your gear's in now. Right, okay. Yeah, I just gotta figure it out. That was what I thought, Kevin said, you remember how that drain is for that. I, I remember, you said shower. I come down here a couple times, I stopped Kevin, he was, you know, did a lot of work for it. Workers for internation, you know. You can't talk to father, you can't, okay. Just do, any one of, can't follow the answer, you could. Honestly, could that was a big. Yeah, no. You're not going to leave the blood, or something, for our office. Yeah, you're wrong. Yeah. Then for a wall, full sink. Oh, there, right? Yeah, you're for a wall. We come in, that wall, yes, we go over, why would we? Run back, full sink. Okay, glass, glass, water. The door? Oh, yeah. Door, glass, and water, yeah. No shit. And, and door, full sink. Say that like a two six. Or two, or three quarters. Well, then I don't think I'm gonna get stuck with the front wall. Yeah, yeah. We can do that, yes, that's what they're done there. The same issue? Yeah. Yeah, that preservation is probably what gets out of that. That's what I heard, uh, I think Tim was telling me that one time over there. And people are looking at that. And I think it's better for sound, the sound, or, or sound, that we would, are we? Yeah, what's, I mean. I'm just, that's, probably not that, that's just ask on student, because. We're not gonna, I mean, if I need interviews, I'm gonna have to take them to jail. And the county's got an interviewer, a seducer, a reporter, I don't mind, I don't give that shit here. I think there's a lot of line there. I wish. I'll just be grabbed, argue about, I mean, we did a lot, a hundred and thirty-three for a while. So, like, yeah. Maybe we got two plus five, maybe two hundred. And you're able to. Yeah. With a brush. I had, I had a little brush back. Yeah, that's one of the accidents I had, that thing, I get these cars in, I don't, so they don't get, you know, so much, I don't care that. People house. Yeah, it's a fetish, I'm sorry. Mm-hmm. What the, what the. We should, we should have had a girl, like, I agree, to go through. Mm-hmm, yeah. And he had this idea, was, started every justice center, I'm pretty, somebody said, and I'm like, you're making a big plan, I struggle with this here. I said, so, how about grand, this is most anybody, you know, these people are born rich, you're out born rich here too, and you know your locations, you're not, maybe they can be room, maybe don't. I would have a huge issue. It was a, a, a judicial center, you know, where I'm gonna have to train me classes and courses here and all that first of all. But it did, I guess it did work out, it was sitting all on the, on side of it, so. If I had my choice, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be admitted to it. I'd be, I said, grand, right, right there. Yeah, you can. Oh, yeah. Want that, want that. Yeah. It's still separated. Could be careful what I, what I'm doing down there. Mm-hmm. I got a hand, something, I think I'm gonna do. Yeah, I figured, I should say, um, I need to, I need to do something, uh, and he suggested, he figured they said that was a problem, I don't know. I'd make a court, like, if only, but, but. I'll finish. I'll make a couple of it now, I should do, yeah. It's creation. I'm gonna have to do some, some out of the road, which is a lot of. Yeah, that means, you know, you don't, you don't, that, you know.